Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant, professionals, members of the board, please make sure to speak directly into the microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please make sure to fill out the sheet on the table so we can properly identify you. Okay, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind you. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Mr. Healy, just for the record, in advance of the meeting, I did administer the oath of office to Mr. Brown, Dr. Chase, and Mr. Shabon. So that's already been taken care of. We can dispense with that on the agenda if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we do have, this is the first meeting of the year, so we do have some quick housekeeping matters to take care of. This is the reorganization that occurs at the beginning of every year for the different boards. The first thing on the agenda is the nomination and selection of the chairperson. Do we have a nomination for the chair?
Bob, we can't hear you. You have to talk right into it.
So just sort of, again, let's just establish real quick. These mics are very sensitive. You have to be right on top of them, just so everybody knows, okay?
All right, again, I'd like to nominate Mike-
Or maybe they're insensitive, whichever. Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, sorry. Apparently, they turn off, too. So, Mike Arcini, you are the chair. I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. We'll now move on to the nomination, selection of the vice chairperson, and for that, I nominate Mr. Charles Brown.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Opposed? It carries, so Charles is vice chair. So, we have to appoint our board attorney. We have, I believe, two potential applicants, so we can interview them. I don't know if the other-
No, we just have the one attorney.
Okay. So, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Vignola, who represents the firm of Clarkin and Vignola, who has been our planning board attorney for some time?
Yeah, is there, is there anything in, any change in your firm's schedule or operations that would keep you from performing the duty as well as you have in the past?
Not at all.
And you obviously want to do it because you're required?
Absolutely.
Okay, so with that, I move that the firm of Clarkin and Vignola are, will represent the board as planning board attorneys.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you all very much.
There you are. Do you need to witness the oath, Mark Healy? Okay.
Mr. Healy, if you could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide for the board during calendar year 2023 will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Christine, can you call the roll of those of us who are here?
Okay. Councilman and barson Jennifer Ragnow, Musafa Mansray, Emma Hare Rafi, all asked to be excused this evening. Theodore Chase?
Somebody must be leaning against the wall.
Sammy Shabon?
Here.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Michael Arcini?
Here.
So, we don't have any minutes. Resolutions, we have our 2023 calendar. Doesn't differ too much from the calendars we had in the past, first and third Wednesdays of the month. We have a break in August, so nothing too unusual. So I move to adopt our 2023 calendar.
Second.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Shabon?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes. Second resolution is BH 31 Schoolhouse Road, LLC, PLN 2200010. And I will move to approve that resolution.
Second.
Theodore Chase?
This is, oh, the calendar, okay. Yes.
This is BH.
Oh, BH. Yeah, there was a requirement that they redo the determination of the water table. Does anybody know whether that was done?
Well, it hasn't been done yet. It's a, it's a condition, and if you go to the second to last page, it is addressed in, it's the, it's the first condition. Aye at the top of the second to last page. Applicants shall conduct supplemental testing of the groundwater, which should be conducted with the town engineer in attendance. If the groundwater level is found to be lower than originally thought, so I think that's all the-
Yeah, I know, it was there. I wanted to know whether it had been done.
No, it hasn't been-
Whether it would be right to pass the resolution if they haven't done it.
Well, it was contained in the resolution.
The condition was that they had to do it in, you know, as a condition of the approval with CME in attendance. And they have to prove to CME whether the water table was where they said it was.
Yeah, in other words, it's part, it's part of the resolution that they do that.
Okay, if you can accept that.
Okay, Ted Chase?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes. Okay, we have one extension of time for barbecue tonight, LLC, PLN 190005. Do you, do you represent it?
It does.
Oh, okay. Probably not. There's a little switch on the side.
There's a switch on the side, on, off. Now you got to hit the button. Just turn it on.
No.
Now, there we go. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Peter Lanford, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This was an application for site plan approval for the conversion of an existing building at the intersection of Route 27 and Evelyn Avenue to a restaurant. If the board recalls, because this goes back a few years, the board requested that we provide sidewalk along Route 27, which is in the jurisdiction of the DOT. We have been working with them because there were some issues, there are some infrastructure that we had to deal with. We are in a position now to resubmit our plans to DOT to get the approval for the sidewalk. We also are submitting a compliance package to the township for their review under the municipal land use law. We are entitled to request two one-year extensions. We have not yet requested an extension. We are requesting a one-year extension, and hopefully we'll have everything cleaned up fairly shortly.
So give me a date.
One year.
From? I mean, a date that-
The resolution was October 2019, so I would think it would, one year going to October of this year.
Oh, so October of 2023?
Yeah.
October 1st, October 31st?
October 31st, that's fine.
Okay. I'll make a motion to extend to October 31st, 2023.
Seconded.
Ted Chase?
Yes.
Sammy Shabon?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes. Okay. So, at this part, time of the meeting, we open the meeting for any general planning comments, not the subject of the hearing tonight. So, since the hearing tonight is V9 Schoolhouse owner LLC, and if you're here for that, obviously, the public portion is going to be opened again, and I'll get into how we're going to handle that in a bit. So, I'll make a motion to open the meeting for any general planning comments not subject to the hearing tonight.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, and meeting is open to the public for any general planning comments.
Seeing none, I move we close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we move to our one hearing tonight. So, a couple of administrative announcements. Because of the size of the public and the application, we are certainly not going to get through it tonight. So rather than have a, sort of a, the way we generally do in a planning board is if applicant presents all their witnesses, which we're not going to get through tonight, and then, and then we open it to the public, and then we close it to the public. We're going to do this more like a zoning board meeting, where after each witness, the, the meeting will be open for cross-examination or questions, and questions only, not comments, but questions of that particular witness. And once those, those questions are done, then we, we'll move on to the next witness and open it again, et cetera, et cetera, until it is complete, which again, it will not be tonight. If you are represented by the attorney that's representing, and you're on that list that the attorney has provided us, you will not be able to come up and talk separately. The attorney will represent the people that, those, that they represent. If you are not part of that, and Christine has the list and will cross-check it, then you will be allowed to come up and speak separately, and we will have a three-minute time limit on that. So we can get, get, get through as much as we can tonight. We will not introduce any new witnesses after nine o'clock, and we will not go past 10 o'clock. All right? This is 2005, where we went to one in the morning. Those days are over. All right, so with that-
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, unfortunately, my office has a conflict with respect to this application. Mr. Reagan, the attorney for the zoning board, is going to be handling it on behalf of the board. So with that, I'll step down.
Happy New Year. Good evening, Peter. Peter? The floor is yours.
Hey, Frank, I think before we begin, I think we should qualify and swear Darren in.
You're, you're good to go for it.
Darren, for the record, if you could just give your name and who you're employed by?
Darren Mazzi, and I'm employed by CME Associates.
And you're the board engineer?
I am.
If you could raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give, or any testimony you're about to give this evening and during the hearing on this application will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Oh, they turned it off on you, Peter. Sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a site plan approval to construct two buildings to be used as warehouses on property known as Block 514, Lots 1, 2, 3, and 60. The street addresses are 96 through 104 Schoolhouse. When this application was submitted, there was also an accompanying application for a subdivision approval. The subdivision approval would be a minor subdivision because a portion of Lot 60 is in the RR3 zone. We are subdividing that lot, or that portion of the property, from Lot 60 so that the application before this board is solely for property in the BI zone. Obviously, any action this board takes, if it is a favorable action, would be contingent upon that subdivision being perfected. That subdivision is, I believe, scheduled next month, and it is through the Minor Subdivision Committee. With respect to the application itself, for the benefit of everybody, so they understand what we intend to do, we will be calling six witnesses so that members of the public can reserve whatever questions they have to the appropriate witnesses. I will be having the, a representative of the applicant as my first witness. I will have a architect testify as to the two buildings that we are proposing. I will have a site engineer who will also be testifying as to the site plan. My guess is that's about as far as we're going to get tonight, if we get that far. But I also have a landscape architect who will be testifying as to screening and plantings and berm. I also will have a traffic consultant, and finally, a professional planner, because there are certain C variances that are associated with this application, for which we will present testimony in support of those C variances. So with that preamble, I will call, as my first witness, Liz Gaber.
Ms. Gaber, can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony about this will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, your name and who you're employed by?
My name's Liz Gaber. I'm a vice president- No, you can't hear me? Okay. My name's Liz Gaber. I'm a vice president of development for Link Logistics.
Ms. Gaber, uh-
You're not on, you're not- I think we all, I think sometimes these turn off. We all, I think, we all have to make sure to look at the red light.
Ms. Gaber, you're employed by Link Logistics, as you indicated?
That is correct.
Okay. And are you the project manager for this project and responsible for obtaining the developmental approvals for this project?
I am.
And Link Logistics owns the property that is the subject of this application?
Pete, you have to speak into the mic and not turn your face.
Okay.
V9 Schoolhouse owner LLC owns the property, and Link Logistics is the staff to V9 Schoolhouse.
Okay. And when, if you know, did they acquire title to the property?
When did they acquire title?
Yes.
In 2020, early 2022.
Okay. And the property that they acquired title to is the lots and blocks that I testify, or I stated in my opening comments, is that correct?
Yes.
And on the property in question, at the present time, there are two single-family dwellings, and then the rest of the property is vacant-
Correct.
-or undeveloped. Can you tell the board briefly who Link Logistics is?
Sure. Link Logistics is a national developer-owner-operator of warehouse space. We have 550 million square feet across the nation, 1,100 tenants. I'm with the development staff. Our development group is about 40 people. In Franklin, we have three projects that we've been working on, so we're familiar with the township and, and are almost complete, our first building.
The, the three projects in Franklin are all warehouses?
They are.
And they are either under construction or completed?
They are either under construction or in the middle of approval process.
Okay, thank you. Now, when you focused on the site that is the subject of this application, what was the criteria of your company in selecting this property?
We liked the property at 104 Schoolhouse because it was zoned to allow industrial already, allow warehouses, and so that was one of the key factors. We looked at the potential to build a certain amount of square footage, be able to obtain approvals, and something that's really economically feasible.
And after you started down the path towards the development of this property and selected your development team and prepared plans, did you in fact find out that there were some concerns regarding this project and some of the things that are being proposed by residents adjacent to this property?
We did. We learned from the residents of Canal Walk that they did not want to see a warehouse, and that many of them were informed that the property was zoned to allow warehouse development. So we engaged in, I don't know, a six-plus-month effort to work on design changes.
And during the, the six-month period, did you and your professional team have meetings with representatives of the board of Canal Walk?
We did. We met with a few people from the board, heard comments and requests to change various things to the site and the building, which we did. We, I would say, even prior to receiving comments from the Canal Walk board, we planned the site purposely to kind of be self-contained and to have, you know, the least amount of impact to the residential neighbors as well.
Okay. And as a result of the meetings that you had with the representatives of the Canal Walk Homeowners Association, are you aware of a resolution that was adopted by that association?
I am.
Okay. And that resolution contains certain requests and recommendations with respect to the project, some of which were requests of you as the developer, and some were actually requests of the township over which you have no control. But with respect to those items that you have control over, have those items been incorporated into the plan that is before the board this evening? And if for some reason we've missed something, we will incorporate those items into the plan?
Correct. We included everything that was agreed to with the Canal Walk Association in our December submission to the township.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness.
So, yeah, let's, let's, let's do some board questions first, obviously, before we, we open it up to the public for-
As a project manager, are you aware that if-
Bob's going to have to get a lot closer to that, or just pull it in.
Are you aware if there's any end user for this project?
All right. Presently, the building is being developed for speculative use. Being that we are a national developer, typically, we see when a building is been built is when tenants come and show interest. A lot of logistics and warehouse users don't plan far enough ahead of time to say, oh, in two years, or whatever, I'm going to need a building. So they're more of a six-month lead, and we'll expect pretty much six months before our building is complete to start talking with tenants.
Okay, so in summary, at this point, as we, as the application process goes on, you have no idea who's going to be using it?
We have a general idea of our tenant base, but right now, we're not talking to any specific entity.
Is there any reason you can't disclose some of those tenant things?
Oh, sure, yeah. So in this particular area, some of our tenants that we have are Krishnan Dior, Petco, Dunkin' Donuts, Burlington Coat Factory.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board at this time?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Sam.
So you, you had mentioned that you understood that there were some concerns from Canal Walk, and I think you guys made some adjustments. Can you just describe what some of those were?
This is going to be a learning experience. I think it's best, the site engineer, when he testifies, will go into all of the details
And the architect.
And the architect of the site changes that were made. I also will proffer, and so you will have it, the requests of the Canal Walk Homeowners Association by virtue of that resolution. So I, we will get to, and I think those witnesses are more capable, not capable, but-
Whoa!
Better prepared to answer those questions.
Okay.
Thrown under the bus.
All right. Seeing no other board questions at this time, I'll make a motion to open to the public, and we'll, we'll start, just to let everyone know, we'll, we'll start with those who are, who are currently represented and let their attorney cross-examine first before we open it up to anybody who's not on that list. So with that, I make a motion to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Arcini, can we confirm? I know Mr. Lieberman is here, and I know he's provided information as to clients that he represents. Are there any other attorneys that are here that represent any of the other residents or concerned parties?
Good evening. My name is Howard D. Cohen. I'm the attorney and special counsel for the Canal Walk Homeowners Association.
Okay, well, why don't you stay where you are? If you have any questions on behalf of your clients, we'll let you go first because you represent the Homeowners Association.
I have no questions.
You have no questions? Okay. Then, Mr. Lieber-
Evening. My name is Howard D. Cohen. I'm the attorney and special counsel for the Canal Walk Homeowners Association.
Okay, well, why don't you stay where you are? If you have any questions on behalf of your clients, we'll let you go first because you represent the Homeowners Association.
I have no questions.
You have no questions? Okay. Then, Mr. Lieber-
Can you hear me? All right, very good. All right, Stuart Lieberman, on behalf of the Citizens Warehouse Action Group, and we did provide counsel for the board, actually, we provided the board, we provided the board's secretary with a copy of our list, and I believe that's been provided to counsel. So, so we did do that. Thank you very much. I have some questions. Good evening, ma'am. I hope you get the Dunkin' Donuts, actually. That's the one I prefer. If I get to weigh in, you, you don't know who the tenants are going to be because everybody seems to, or everybody seems to build warehouses on spec right now. That's been, I guess that's the industry standard right now. That's what you're saying?
Yes, that's typical.
Okay. But you've got two warehouses that are proposed. One's about 177, and I might be off a little, 175,000 square feet, and others about 75,000 square feet. I know my numbers aren't exactly right, but that's the basic difference, right? That's what you're proposing, more or less, isn't that correct?
Generally.
So, yeah, I, I know my numbers aren't exactly right.
Generally.
Generally, yeah, because my numbers aren't exactly right, and the record speaks for itself. But the, you must, there must be a difference in the type of tenant that you're anticipating for the bigger warehouse than the smaller one. Is that fair characterization?
I mean, we think that it will be warehouse for both of them, obviously. So I don't know what you're implying by different types of tenants.
Well, the bigger one, might it attract a different type of tenant than the smaller one, based on your experience?
No, I don't really see them as being different. When tenants come around, they will maybe have, require different sizes for whatever they see as being stored in that certain part of the country, but their storage and warehouse delivery for all of our tenants.
Would you anticipate that each warehouse would be rented to just one tenant, or would you anticipate multiple tenants in one or both of the buildings?
Right now, we're anticipating a single tenant for both buildings, but it is possible that they could be broken down to multiple.
Now, the height is 40 feet. Does that, is there a reason why you have a 40-foot height, and is that standard?
Because right now, tenants are, I guess, industry standard is requiring a 36-clear building, which means that under roof, they can have racking that goes up 36 feet.
Okay, and the racking would be automated, I take it?
Not necessarily.
What are you anticipating?
Right now, we would anticipate these buildings to not be automated.
You wouldn't be, you would anticipate that it wouldn't be automated. Now, it's my understanding that the warehouses were constructed for a certain-sized truck in mind? Is that your, as, as, as an older representative, is that your understanding?
Well, we designed them to be capable for the largest-sized truck, but it could allow many different types of trucks to move.
And, and the biggest truck that you designed for is about 75 feet long. Does that sound about right?
about right?
A WB67.
Which is 75 feet?
Correct.
Okay. So if this is built, then this would be able, your loading facilities, et cetera, would be able to accommodate 75-foot trucks?
That's true. But also, at the same time, our traffic engineer, you can ask those questions of him.
No, I will. I'll take it. But you're the owner's rep. I'm just asking general questions. And, you know, you seem to have, how many years have you been in this business?
Ma'am, I've been working for 25 years.
So you have general experience, information about these operations, I think.
Generally, sure.
In fact, more than general. But I understand that there's different witnesses that you're going to have, and I'll certainly ask them the appropriate questions. I promise. The other warehouse facilities that you have in Franklin, are they on scenic, on roads that are designated as scenic corridors, do you know?
In Franklin, no, they are not.
Do you have any warehouses in any other municipality on roads designated as scenic corridors?
Scenic corridor specifically, no.
All right. You're aware that there are residences across the street from where you're proposing to build, right?
Yes, we are.
And you're aware that there's mixtures of single-family houses and townhouse development as well, right?
Yes, we are.
And the agreement that you reached is with the Board of Directors of a condominium association, is that, or homeowners association, is that correct?
Homeowners, correct.
No one's represented to you that the people who live in that complex necessarily agree with that? No one's ever made that representation to you?
I'm going to object to the question. I think that's inappropriate. The resolution, I will introduce through Mr. Cohen, if necessary, speaks for itself. And I believe Mr. Cohen can answer that question.
I would agree.
That's it, ma'am. Thanks a lot, Mr. Cohen. I appreciate your...
Sure, you're welcome.
So now, at this time, we'll entertain any general questions from anyone who is not represented by Mr. Lieberman or Mr. Cohen. And this is questions of the witness, not comments. Please.
It's on.
It's on.
know exactly what tenant's going to be there, so might it be that there might be something hazardous there, perhaps, under that roof?
I mean, we have restrictions and requirements of what happens under our buildings and protocols for how things are handled. But at the same time, it's also zoned in such a way that, and built in such a way, that hazardous materials aren't allowed to be stored en masse.
They aren't.
Right. So they're cleaning products and so on, which are considered hazardous would be in the building.
And the township would be notified if that were the case, maybe, or?
Yeah. Correct. But again, it's not being built to a standard that it allows heavy industrial uses to be in the building.
Okay. And our attorney is also writing down the names.
Enter Strauss, sir. Okay. Also, we've heard a lot recently, obviously, about cannabis. Do you think there might be some cannabis there? Because warehouses have been used for that. Okay. Is that a possibility?
Is that a question as far as manufacturing or just warehousing?
Well, either one, maybe. But warehousing, but maybe manufacturing. I don't...
Well, the application strictly for warehousing, so there is no manufacturing proposed.
But it could be warehoused, maybe, maybe.
I'll have to have Liz answer that question.
Okay.
I mean, to my knowledge at this point, we don't have cannabis tenants, but we would vet them. And if they're financially viable, I think that we would talk and consider that as a possible use. But we're not aware of any, nor have talked to any.
Okay. Thank you. Also, from reading the papers or online, we see these things are being not just built, but flipped, bought, sold, you know, everything like that. Would Link Blackstone be willing to sign a piece of papers saying that you will not sell this warehouse for a period of years, and that way you will keep, you know, your eye on everything that's promised, rather than sell it to somebody?
Mr. Strauss, it's not an appropriate question for her to answer. That's not part of her testimony.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I'm next. Arnold Schmidt, 134 Hickory Road. I've never been to a planning board meeting and testified here, so I might ask some questions or make some comments that aren't appropriate, and I'm sure you will let me know if I am doing the wrong thing. Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year, Ari.
Thank you, Dr. Orsini. To have, to avoid having trucks queuing on the adjacent roads to this project, will the parking lots of these facilities be large enough, as they should be, to accommodate all arriving trucks to stop the roadway queuing? I think that question will be more appropriately addressed by future witnesses. If you don't wait for them, we'll deal with that. And I don't want to, I also don't want to concede the premise that you made in your initial statement, that there is a problem with queuing on roadways. But you'll hear testimony concerning the ability of this facility and this site to handle trucks.
So maybe save that for traffic.
So just to set the stage here in terms of, you know, you may have other questions, and other people may develop the questions as we move on. As Mr. Lanford said before, after this, he's going to have the architect. Then there's going to be the, so our architect, obviously, if you have questions about the appearance of the building, et cetera. There's going to be the site engineer. So the site layout, stormwater, environmental-type issues, that's going to be for the site engineer. There's going to be a landscape architect. Landscape architect is going to talk about screening. So how they're going to screen the building, the trees, where they're going to be, things of that nature, it's going to be for the landscape architect. It's going to be a traffic engineer. You can guess what the traffic engineer is going to talk about. He's going to be talking about the trucks, the number of, the number of trucks, how the site's going to operate, whether there's going to be issues with the roadway network. And then there's going to be a planner who's going to talk about the variances that they're seeking. So I just wanted to give you that, you know, summary again. So then, again, as these, some of your questions pop up, make sure to point them to the correct person, and that's going to get your questions answered the most effective way.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I do have questions that are typically about what I just talked about, but also about landscaping, trees, things like that. How are we going to be able to know when those people are going to be here and when we're going to be able to question them about those items?
Well, it's a good question. Nobody, nobody knows how long or how many meetings this is going to go. That, I think you had said, Mr. Lanford, that that's the fourth or fifth witness?
The landscape architect will be the fourth witness, I believe.
So is that tonight? Oh, no.
Most likely not. Unless, it depends how efficiently we move through these, you know, questions, how many questions we have. Nobody knows how, I don't have a crystal ball, like you don't either. And I'm just making it, it wasn't just directed at you, it was to everybody. So you can, you can all gather your questions and know who to ask.
Understood. Okay. So I will hold off any of the landscaping questions. And the other, only other question, which is related to the first question that I asked, is whether is in the planning board's authority or the township's authority, or however it would work, to, and I know Mr. Lanford didn't appreciate how I presented my first question, but would it be, would the township be able to post no standing and no parking signs? What was the proper wording that I had here? You will be hearing as to both of those things with future witnesses. And the answer is yes. But you'll hear in more detail later.
Okay. And that will be another expert that comes up that's going to be talking about traffic?
Correct.
Okay. So we have to wait for that. And if that person comes up tonight, and I've already spoken, does that mean I can't speak? No. No, you can definitely. Okay. Because we're not entertaining those now because that witness has not yet testified. So we will let you come back up and ask those questions.
Well, it's been my pleasure. Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay. Seeing no other witness, anybody else coming forward to question, I move to close the public portion for this particular witness. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. So Peter, you can go on to your architect.
Thank you.
And you let me know when you want the bathroom break. I'm going to let you, I'm going, I'm going to, perfect. Perfect.
Your mic is not on.
Before I go to my next witness, the architect, I think it's probably appropriate at this time that I just call Mr., or ask Mr. Cohen to come up so that I can, or put into evidence that resolution of the homeowners association, so that the Board has that before them. Obviously, Mr. Cohen is here not as a witness, but as counsel to the homeowners association. And, Mr. Cohen, I have here a document entitled Canal Walk Homeowners Association Resolution, which consists of certain requests and then a list of exhibits. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that was provided to me by you after this resolution was adopted by the homeowners association?
That's correct.
Okay. I would like to have this marked as a one.
Please, please use the mic. You've written, and we'll go through them. I object to the introduction of that resolution. My point is this, under the... And, and I announced my intention to run for mayor.
Mr. Chairman, are we at a baseball game or at a hearing?
I didn't know that was going to elicit that reaction. I could assure you. But thank you. But anyway, the point is this. The reason that I make the objection is, under the municipal land use law, I don't know how it's relevant. It's up to the, there are certain ordinances, and the municipal land use law, which is a state law that apply, the applicant has a burden of proving that he satisfies them. Whether there are other people in the community who have a position, they can come here and testify. But I don't believe that a written resolution has any weight or should be given any weight by the Board. I think it's up to this Board to determine whether or not the applicant has met his burden, period. So I really object. But it could, or that, at least that particular. So, I mean, I'm not going to render a legal opinion, but the way I look at it is this. I tend to agree with you, and I'll tell you why. The Board, much like much other third-party agreements that we have, witnessed before. For example, we just had a church a couple months ago, parking, that they don't have enough parking. They had a third-party agreement. If that third party were to go away, either the church or those who promised parking, then they're not complicit in parking. And this, the homeowners association that's represented by the current homeowners that are part of that association is not going to be set in stone for forever. And things could change. So I would tend to agree that the Board should base its decision on the weight of the evidence before it. Moreover, thank you. Moreover, Chairman, just, and I'm going to sit down in a second, but the other, I don't want to prolong this, but the other reason is, that is a Board of Directors' resolution. That means that the four, or five, or six people that are on the Board, they approved it. It does not represent the consensus necessarily of the people who live there. And it could be, and it can be very misleading in that way. And that's what my concern is. So first off, thank you. Please, let me ask you to, you know, refrain from public outbursts. That may influence anything one way or the other. It's not going to influence me. I, obviously, you guys that know me, know I'm pretty thick-skinned, and I'm not going to be influenced by anything that is not factual. That said, no applause, booing, cat calls, or any paper spitballs, or anything like that, please. Let's just, let's just have some, have some decorum. But, I mean, that's the way I would look at it, is, you know, it's great that a subset of, may agree to this, but it's not, as a Board, we are going to rule on whether or not your plans, we're a quasi-judicial body, so we're going to rule on whether your plans, you know, make sense, whether your variances are justified, however your planner ultimately justifies them, whether it's C1 or C2 criteria. And at least me personally, I couldn't care less what third-party agreements may or may not be there.
Well, if I may respond, and I'll defer to Mr. Cohen, too. This is not a third-party agreement. This is a resolution. Our plans that you are acting on were partially amended based on requests of the Board of Directors, of the homeowners association, as a result of meetings with myself, my professionals, the owner, to try to develop a plan that is most beneficial to all parties concerned.
And, I know, I totally get it. But let me tell you where that comes down. When you get up, your planner gets up and says, "Board, we think that benefits outweigh the detriments," or "we think this is a better zoning alternative," that is considered in that, apart from any agreement?
I understand, but it is not an agreement. And I just want to make that clear. It's a resolution. And again, if we need to call the Board of Directors to indicate what's in this document, I think we're wasting everybody's time. I would like to put the document into evidence. Like I said, most of the information contained in this document are on the plans, and this will help the Board see what the discussion is worth.
But if it's in the plans, and you've reflected it, and you're going to testify to those plans, why do we need yet another document?
May I be heard? May I be heard?
Yes, of course.
All right. No one on the Board has seen this document, so we're speaking in an abstract. This document contains proposed mitigation measures, both on-site and off-site. They are relevant to the application, and they are relevant to the Board's consideration of the application in all, from all standpoints.
Will your witnesses be covering those and testifying to them?
Yes.
Then we don't need another document.
Well, just a moment. Mr. Chair, just a moment. I heard what you said. I would submit respectfully that, as a matter of law, there's nothing that precludes the introduction of this resolution. As a matter of law, there is nothing that precludes the Board from being aware of what a large residential community believes is the appropriate way to address potential adverse impact. This resolution was not willy-nilly... potential adverse impact. This resolution was not willy-nilly adopted. This was a six-
Please, please, please. I, I, I'm not going to allow that. That's one thing I won't allow. We can have respectful discourse, but we don't, we don't need, please, continue.
The Board of Directors authorized me, with a delegation, to meet with the applicant and to meet with the township. Those meetings occurred over a six-month period. Over that period of time, I held three community meetings with the residents in Canal Walk, explaining to them the facts, explaining them, to them the law, explaining to them the proposed mitigation measures. There was a special board meeting called and noticed on December 13th. The meeting was held on December 22nd. The board, special board meeting was called in accordance with Section 4.07 of its bylaws. At that meeting, on December-
It's irrelevant to this planning board, by the way.
It's relevant relative, it's relevant-
This is the only thing that's relevant, Mr. Cohen.
I respectfully disagree.
We can agree to disagree. It's no different than I would, all of these people could sign a petition saying, "We hate warehouses and we never want one." I can't accept it because it's not part of the MOU. I can only accept what's in the plans. I'm sorry, I disagree.
Respectfully, sir, it is relevant to the issue of mitigation.
Which you're going to testify to in all your expert testimony.
Yes, but would not the board like to know what the position of Canal Walk is with respect to mitigation?
If it's in those plans, then we'll know it.
I respect, I respect-
Because we just had a question from one of the board members saying, can your witnesses please detail what it is that you've done to address concerns from Canal Walk? You just had Ms. Graber testify that she's very much aware of that. So therefore, we're going to hear that, and we're going to hear and compare and contrast what has been done. I don't want the board's judgment polluted by a separate document over which we have no control.
You have control. You have the opportunity to cruel call-
Which is going to be in this testimony.
Can we hear from the rest of the board members if anybody has any comments?
Yes. Okay, no, you can, you can disagree as well, but I mean, I'm just, we're gonna hear-
So I hear the council disagrees with the admissibility of the document.
I, I asked the chairman if we could hear from other board members.
Frank, you have to be on, you have to talk into the mic.
I, I just, if we wanted to, I asked the chairman if we could hear from other board members, if they have any thoughts on the issue that's being discussed.
Uh, Mr. Cohen, does the agreement, you stated that there are mitigations off-site, which therefore are not part of this application. Do, would any of these require a zoning variance?
Mr. Cohen, I don't believe your mic is on.
The answer to your question is no, it would not require any variances.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize.
We heard Ted. Does anyone else have a comment?
Yes, I would like for you to provide a little more contextualization of this resolution, the number of people who determine the mitigation strategies, et cetera, like what percentage of the population of Canal Walk are we talking about, just to give a little more perspective. I do want to say I appreciate the mention of the resolution in lieu of the comments of bringing everyone forward. I do see them being congruent with that, as opposed to having each and every person come here. But with, with respect to that, I would like to hear the number of people that you're mentioning here.
Of course. When the application was known to us, I recommended to the board that a delegation be appointed to interact with me, with the township, and with the applicant. They included five residents from the Bryant Court neighborhood, which was directly affected and is being directly affected by the warehouse, since it is proximate to that neighborhood. It also included three additional delegation representatives from other portions of Canal Walk. The delegation met with me, the delegation met with the board, the delegation and I made presentations to the community. At three, at two separate meetings, on September 1st and on November 17th, I answered questions to the community. I was on my feet for three hours, an hour presentation and two hours of questions. No one was cut off. On the evening of the introduction of the resolution, December 22nd, the same format existed. I made a presentation for an hour. I responded to questions for two hours. The board, in accordance with its authority under the bylaws, approved the adoption of the mitigation, so that the planning board would have in front of it what the board's position is with respect to mitigation and adverse impact. I respectfully suggest that is, that is a relevant consideration in conjunction with your overall evaluation of this application.
I, I agree. I think it is a relevant consideration. I would take it, just as if I would take it if each board member came here and presented before the public. I think that's the proper contextualization of their resolution, but don't see it beyond that fact. You stated you had a community meeting. How many people were present beyond the five that you mentioned?
I would approximate probably anywhere from 100 to 150 people.
How many would you approximate live in that community?
All of them.
All of them, so all of them were present at the meeting?
Yes, and then-
And see, this goes exactly to my point. The board has absolutely no control over what happens somewhere else. And, and you could all be singing kumbaya, and it still wouldn't make any difference to me. You know, that's-
Just one last comment. Without documentation, did you provide, did you count any persons, or can you provide proof that all 100 people were present?
I, I think Charles-
Yes, can you provide proof that?
We did not take a roll call.
So how do you know 100 people were present?
Because I saw in the numbers of seats occupied in the clubhouse.
So the, the members of the public are here who disagree with you. Are you calling them liars?
No, I, I think you misunderstand-
No, I understand numbers.
No, I'm not sure you do.
I just want you to answer the question, and then I'll move on. You said 100 people were there. Do you have any facts to prove that 100 people were there?
I was present.
Any evidence?
I was present.
Beyond your anecdotal evidence, do you have any evidence to prove 100 people were there, yes or no?
I can call the board chair, and they can, they can also testify.
I'll await that evidence. Thank you.
If I may as well. So I, I think the fact that it needs so much contextualization is, is proof and fact that why this is-
Sammy, your mic is not on. You have to make sure the red light is on, and you have to make sure you're talking into the-
The red light is on here. That this one isn't on, but this one is on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
I guess this red light is broken. Apologies for that. So I would tend to agree that the fact that there needs to be so much contextualization makes the problem that much more obvious. It would be no dissimilar than if the group here were to sign a petition and then want to submit it as part of the application. When this resolution was adopted, was there a meeting thereafter with the community to discuss that adoption?
No, because the, the terms of the resolution, the terms of the mitigation, were all spelled out prior to the vote by the Board of Directors.
My specific question is, you seem to have gone through a process where you interpreted what you believed a subset of that community wanted, but thereafter you reduced it down to words on a piece of paper. Did you then return back to that community to verify that what you had reduced down to that piece of paper was in fact accurate?
I had, I, I had interacted with the Board of Directors, which is the elected body to represent the homeowners' association, and was advised that-
Yeah. There's a distinction between the question that I asked and your answer. I'm asking specifically regarding the people of the community, that you garnered their opinions. Did you in fact go back to that same community, once you had reduced it down to writing, to verify? I'm not talking about the board, I'm talking about the community. Did you go back?
The answer is no. However, I answered your question earlier by stating that the terms of the resolution and the terms of the mitigation were fully explained to those present and those participating by Zoom prior to the adoption of the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question for, for Frank. You know, perhaps, and Frank, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I'm thinking of this is, perhaps we're getting a little bit hung up on a document. We have, the applicant is represented by an attorney. He's going to represent the applicant's perspective on things. We have an attorney who's representing people who are opposed to it. He's going to communicate their comments. We have Mr. Cohen, who's representing the homeowners' association, and he's going to have the ability to communicate his client's perspective. So I think there's going to be ample opportunity for all three sides to make their case, and perhaps we can do that through, as the normal proceedings, through exhibits and testimony, and perhaps not get hung up on one particular document.
No. Well, Peter, before you go, I, I, I agree with, with what Mr. Healy said, and I think what we need to do is, you gentlemen, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but you've described what's in that resolution, is it essentially reflects the mitigation proposals that have been agreed to between the applicant and the homeowners' association.
And the township.
And that, your witnesses, Mr. Landfrie, are going to address those issues as they go through their testimony. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I think the appropriate thing to do is to have your witnesses come up, provide the testimony, address the mitigation, that's proposals that have been discussed and agreed to between the applicant, the township, and the homeowners' association. And at the end of all that testimony, if the board feels that it would be helpful to them in their deliberations to see the resolution, they'll allow it to be entered into evidence. The public will have an opportunity to see it, and the board can consider that.
Okay. I'll just make one last comment, and then we can move on, otherwise we'll be here all night. Number one-
No, not past 10, though.
Okay. Number one, most of the requested mitigations are in fact in the documents that we have provided. But I, I, since there are some variances that are being sought, some of the mitigation that is being provided addresses those variances, and I think the input from the Board of Directors may bear on the grant of those variances, and I think it's important to the board to review the resolution. Now, I concede that the resolution does not reflect the position of each and every one of the 1,200 and some residents of Canal Walk. There are some residents of Canal Walk who do not agree with the mitigation proposal. There's some residents of Canal Walk who don't want the project at all. The reason that I am proffering the resolution is to give you information, which is the basis of how the plans were evolved, and the board can do what it wants with the resolution, but I think it has bearing and relevance. And we are not saying that this resolution is indicative or supported by each and every resident of Canal Walk. We know that, and you know that. But it is an action taken by the board duly organized and at a duly organized meeting. And it does, I believe, have some bearing when you review all of the plans, and I think the board should accept the resolution for that purpose.
I, I think Frank said it well. We're gonna let the testimony play out. We're going to let your experts, as was just testified to by Ms. Graber, who answered Sammy's question, and, and the answer to that question was, yes, we are going to spell out the differences between what we have proposed and, and the mitigations. I would like to see the cross-examination that Mark Healy has referred to, and, and let this proceed through its six witnesses, through, through the six witnesses you had in the organic. I just don't want the board prejudiced by, you know, putting a finger on the scale to that this is what the homeowners' association, any no different to me than an ex parte agreement, that we have no agreement over. The homeowners' association, sorry to say, is not going to be those same people for the duration that this warehouse, if approved, is going to be erected. So I'd like that to play out first. And then at the end, if we feel that's going to, if there's something that you haven't covered in that mitigation, then we'll consider introducing that later, but not, not right, not right now.
And lastly, Mr. Cohen, obviously, has made an appearance on behalf of the homeowners' association. Will be given the opportunity to, to speak on behalf of his client at the appropriate time, and I assume can address many of the issues that are laid out in the resolution, you know, as part of his testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Okay, Peter, let's go ahead and proceed with your architect.
Can we have your name?
Stephen Kopp.
Yep, just look for the red ring there.
Yeah, you're good.
Stephen Kopp. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Thank you.
Can you spell your last name for the genographer?
K-O-P-P.
Okay. And you are a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Currently licensed?
Correct.
And you have testified before boards and commissions in New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
In this township?
Not in this township.
Okay, but in New Jersey in general?
In New Jersey, yes.
Okay. He's accepted as a qualified architect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kopp, you prepared the architectural plans that are the subject of this application?
Correct.
Peter, before we proceed, the, the visual that we're seeing, has that been submitted to the township? And if not, I'd like to mark it as an exhibit and make sure that a copy's submitted.
Yeah. I believe that everything that we will be introducing on the boards was part of the submission. If there is something that is not, I will advise you, and then we can have it marked.
Even colorized versions, I mean, all of that, what was submitted? That's the only res- okay, yes, yeah. I believe black and white and color were submitted, okay, as part of the zoning submission.
Counsel, I would object. Oh, can I just use your mic for a second? I'll rent it from you just a second, sorry. I would object to anything not submitted within 10 days in advance to be shown to this board tonight. We have other meetings. If it's not, if it wasn't here at least 10 days in advance, I think under the rules, it shouldn't go forward. So I have a standing objection. Unless Peter knows it was.
I think he just said it was.
I, I just, he said he wasn't sure, I think.
No, I, I said, everything that we are introducing has been previously submitted. Some of them may be colorized versions, which have to be marked, but-
That's fine. If he says it, it's true, so that's fine.
Be back.
Hi. Mr. Kopp, there are two, two buildings that are being proposed with respect to this application. Correct?
Okay.
Sorry, correct.
Let's start with the, for, for the purpose of discussion, the smaller building. And can you indicate to the board the size of the building and just-
So, so the building up on the screen now is not the smaller building. This is the bigger building?
No, we-
We can, we can switch. If you go two slides ahead, that's it. The size of the building is 73,600 square feet.
Okay. And can you indicate to the board how much of the building is office and how much of it is warehouse?
There is a 2,000-square-foot planned office, and then the only other two rooms in the building are an electric and a fire pump room, and they're each about, I don't know, 200 square feet. The remainder of the building is shell space to be used by, however the tenant comes in and fits out the space.
And how many doors are being proposed on this building, loading doors?
The smaller building has 22 loading doors and two drive-in doors.
And can you explain to the board and the members of the public what's the difference between a loading door and a drive-in door?
Sure. The 22 loading dock doors are a, there, there's a depressed truck court, four feet down, where the, you know, the various trucks that come in and back up to the building will back up to those docks, and the, the building height will match up with the, the truck bed height. The drive-in doors have two ramps where trucks can actually drive into the building, or vans, or what, what you have you.
Okay. And for the purpose of orientation for the board, these loading doors in this building, the loading doors will face the loading doors for the other building that we will be talking about shortly. Is that correct?
Correct.
And can you indicate to the board, and I guess we do have it as part of the exhibits, what the building will look like from the outside?
Yes, if you go to the next slide, these are the elevations.
Okay. And can you describe what elevations are and what these pictures depict? And can you describe what elevations are and what these pictures depict for the members of the public who are unfamiliar with this process?
Sure. They're basically flat 2D pictures that depict each facade, west, north, east, south.
Okay. And the top drawing is what facade?
That is the west facade. That's the loading, where the loading doors and the drive-in doors are.
And then go to the very bottom of this exhibit. That's the portion of the building where the office is?
Correct, and that faces Schoolhouse Road.
Okay. But this building, based on your knowledge of the other building and everything else, this building generally, that will face Schoolhouse Road, but none of this building will be visible from Metlers Road, is that correct?
It is not, no.
Okay. Can you describe? Can you describe the materials that will be used to construct this building?
Sure. The building materials, the main material is load-bearing concrete walls with a steel-framed structure. The, you know, there are glass clear stories and windows at the office areas, so there's glass and aluminum, as well as an aluminum canopy. The roof will be a white TPO roof with insulation. Those are the general materials, and the facade is painted with Lynx branded colors.
And is there any special treatment and coloring to where the office is located?
Yes. The panels and the paint have a series of reveals to break down the scale of the building, as well as to, you know, create an interesting aesthetic pattern at the front of the building. And really, the intent on the office side is to make it look more like an office building.
And that office portion of the site is the portion closest to Schoolhouse Road, correct?
Correct.
Where are the mechanicals located for this building?
There will be two mechanical units, actually three, one for the office, two for the warehouse, and the warehouse is only conditioned to be heated to keep the space from freezing. So the mechanics units are very small and located in the back towards the loading dock.
Okay. Are there any, are there any rooftop units on this building?
Yes.
And what kind of rooftop units are there on the building?
They're small Cambridge units that heat the interior of the warehouse.
Okay. So this warehouse will be heated but not air-conditioned?
Correct.
Okay. And is this, is there any exterior lighting proposed on this building?
We were, we had proposed, excuse me, we had proposed exterior lighting on the building, but that was removed after conversations with the Canal Walk Board. That was one of the items agreed to.
Okay. Now, can we go to the other building? And can you please describe the size of the building and also the breakdown between office and warehouse?
Sure. The building is 171,375 square feet. There's a 2,000-square-foot office location. This larger building has possibility of a second office, which wouldn't be built out unless a tenant required it. Did you ask me about loading dock doors?
You can go.
This building has 46 loading dock doors and two drive-in doors.
Okay. And again, these loading dock doors face the loading dock doors on the other building?
Correct.
Okay. And where is the office located on this building?
The office is located on the western side, on the plan on the screen, it's at the top right, and there's a little jog in the building. The office is located right there.
Okay. And so that jog in the building and that, the office portion of the building is actually facing Metlers, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if there was a second office, if there were multiple users, where would that office be located?
That's on that same side of the building. It's dashed into the left where you see the little shampur at the top left of the plant.
So it would be, if you're looking at the warehouse from Schoolhouse, it would be at the back of the building, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, the, what is the height of that building, this building?
The high point, top of parapet, is 44 feet.
Okay. And excluding the parapet, the roof, what was the height of the building without the parapet?
It's 43 feet, 4 inches.
Okay.
To the high point. The roof slopes towards the loading docks.
Okay. And with respect to this building, are there any mechanicals that will be located on the roof?
Yes, for the warehouse.
Okay. And what kind of mechanicals will be on the roof?
They're small Cambridge-type units, just like the other building, that only heat the interior of the warehouse.
Okay. So this building also will only be heated and will not be air-conditioned?
Correct.
And just to make it clear, obviously, the office portion of these buildings will have air conditioning?
That is correct. Yeah, the offices will be air-conditioned.
Okay. In conjunction with, again, requests, this building also has no exterior lighting of any kind, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, going back to the units themselves that are on the roof, are they going to be located on the roof in such a position behind the parapet so that they will not be visible from any motorists or pedestrians or anybody else who may be traveling the area?
Yes.
So they will...
They're located towards the loading dock side, and the roof slopes in that direction. So as, you know, the parapets are high at that, you know, at that side of the building that screen, the mechanical units.
Now, the materials that will be used to construct this building are the same materials that you testified to that will be used to construct the smaller building?
That is correct.
Okay. And with respect to the colors of the building, can you indicate whether the colors of the building, what the colors are going to be of both of these buildings?
The general color scheme is the same as Building B, the first building, with the exception, on this building, the Canal Walk requested Disney's Go Away Green color. If, yeah, you can see it there. So we've incorporated that into the western facade that faces Metlers Road, and the intent of that is, is, you know, if you know Disney's Go Away Green, you know, it's the large buildings behind their entertainment facades, so it kind of goes away in your eye and you don't see it.
Okay. And just to make it clear, that change, that entire side of that building will not be that color, just a portion of that building, correct?
Correct.
And which...
Sorry, Peter, can you turn towards your fame a little bit?
I'm sorry, I will, I will try.
Thank you.
If we go back to the exhibit that we had where we showed the office building, that's, what part of the building, if you look at that exhibit, will be colored in that green color that you testified to?
Sure. From the jogged in the building there where the office area is, all the way back around the corner of the shampur is all in the Go Away Green.
And then the rest of the building, the front portion of the building facing Metlers and the front portion of the building facing Schoolhouse will be the other colors that you testified to?
Correct.
So since we did the reorg, we have finished about a quarter to 8:00, and we're now at 8:51. Would now be a good time for five minutes before we get into board questions and cross-examination, because I don't think we're going to introduce any new witnesses tonight by the time that's done. So this might be, if we end at 10:00, let's just say, that would be about halfway through. Is that fair?
You're the boss.
All right. Well, actually, maybe our bladders are. But let's do, let's come back at, let's come back at 9:00, because there are a lot of people, and there's X amount of bathroom space, so let's try, let's try 9:00.
Everyone, if you're able, please take your seat. Mr. Chairman, before we move to another witness or the audience...
Well, actually, so hold on. Where we finished before our bio-break was that you said you were done, your architect was done with this time?
But Mike, speak...
Oh, sorry.
You have to speak right into it, I think that's the problem.
I think before our break, we said that you were done, your architect was done with the testimony, correct? So now open it up to board questions, and then we'll go from there.
I'd just like to make one observation. Is this your testimony on the physical appearance of the buildings?
It is.
All right, then, I'm going to have to tell you right now, I don't have enough information that, if this is the way it goes to the end of the hearing, to judge what these buildings are going to look like. I was expecting some kind of a physical model, some kind of a color rendering. This testimony may be very good technically. It does absolutely nothing in terms of what, well, now we're getting to it, I don't know what we would be holding back for. But I want, I want the information. I want to know, if I'm driving on Metlers Road, what's this building look like? I want to know on Schoolhouse Lane, what the two fronts look like. I don't want to see the technical part of it. And the second question I missed on the first witness, but it kind of blends in with all of this. All of the focus for the last six months has been the effect and the impact visually on one development, and that's Canal Walk, and that's legitimate. I have no issue with that. I haven't heard anybody mention Summer Hill. There's a big portion of, sizable portion of One Family Homes in Summer Hill on Schoolhouse Lane that will be really affected and impacted, I think, by the driveways coming out of this development. So maybe somewhere down the line, because I know we're not ending tonight?
That issue we're aware of, and you will hear testimony on that issue, Mr. Thomas, from both the site engineer and also our traffic consultant.
All right, but if this is the beginning, good. I...
And again, I appreciate your comment. We'll be seeing you more than, on more than one occasion, we can get you that information.
Yeah, I mean, just to second what Bob is saying, I would agree. It's really hard to get an idea of exactly what anybody would be seeing as they drive by. And going over a description like this, and I understand that this may not be the witness that will do it, will be really helpful to the board.
And I think, once you see some of the other exhibits, the building will be put in context with the landscaping and everything else. So we will get there, and I appreciate Mr. Thomas's comment, and we will see if we can get some additional information. But I think, once you see some of the other exhibits, all of this will come into focus.
Okay, we will, we'll take that, we'll take that, and we'll see, you know, when you're done, where we're at, but we may, you kind of know what we're looking for.
Right.
I want to know, before the building is ever constructed, what we would see from all of the, all of the points we would see.
And that you all have. We have that, all that information with respect to the other witnesses. So we'll get to it. And just for the record, Mr. Orsini, I know there are certain board members that are not here this evening. At the next hearing, I will have these witnesses back, so that if any of the board members who were not here, and review the tape, or we're going to have a transcript available, have any questions of these witnesses, I can, these witnesses can be available to be questioned by the board members who were not here.
Yeah, and I want to assure you, Peter, as the applicant's attorney, that, so this is very different from what you and I generally deal with. It's more like what the zoning board deals with. So we'll absolutely make sure that anybody that's not here over the course of the testimony will have to, you know, read the transcript, watch the tape, whatever is available, to be up to speed. I mean, we were barely at a quorum tonight, just because we had some folks that couldn't make it, and so we will have to make sure that that's adhered to, in fairness to you, since this will go over multiple times. Other questions from the board for the architect of the... Yeah, go ahead, Charles.
I want to offer you the opportunity to clarify something. You stated on Metlers Road that the site would not be visible from Metlers Road. Would you like to restate that or not?
Sure. The question that was asked was, the building B visible from Metlers Road? And that building is not visible from Metlers Road. That's the, if you back up to one of the plans, you know, if you look down in the right hand here is an overall kind of site plan, the small building, you will not be able to see from Metlers Road. That's the question that I was asked.
Will you be able to see any of the buildings from Metlers Road?
Initially, before, you know, the landscape grows in, yes, you will be able to see Building A.
So the landscaping is going to be up to 40 feet in the air?
I will, I will let, I will let the landscape architect testify to that. That's not my purview.
Understood. Just wanted to make sure everyone heard you correctly.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sam? Yeah, you had mentioned, I think, two, considered the exterior lighting and then the change in color as sort of accommodations that you had made based on what the...
Correct, correct.
Were there other architectural changes that you made while you were designing this building to accommodate for the residents?
Not that we were, not that I was asked to do, no.
He did testify that we did remove any exterior lighting on the Metlers Road side.
Yeah, no, I mentioned that. It's exterior lighting and the change in color, I think, were the two.
Correct, that's correct.
Right, okay. Sorry, that's correct.
Interesting how that really does come out during the testimony. So there was a question, there was a question that actually probably you are not, maybe want to answer, maybe your first witness, Peter, is something that caught my attention. So you said both proposed warehouses would be heated but not air-conditioned. It would seem to me that that might limit the sort of uses that you might have, like, I guess you're not going to be a warehouse for, like, Dairy Queen or Breyer's Ice Cream or Cadbury Chocolates. So in terms of uses, that now opens a question that I might have for Ms. Graeber. Unless, Peter, I'll...
I'm not, I think, yeah, the buildings are not designed as cold storage buildings right now, so no, Dairy Queen, I wouldn't think would be a tenant, but I, yeah, that's not my purview either.
All right. So when we heard testimony that we don't quite know what it is, there are some clues emerging that say that we certainly know what it might not be.
Yeah.
Any type of grocer, Amazon Fresh Grocer, anything like that, not going to be there without air conditioning or cooling in some way.
Yes, significant changes would have to occur. Or, you know, they would do something different inside.
Ted?
Could you paint the roof white for maximum of reflection of sunlight? That will generally reduce the heating load.
Yes, you are correct, and the roof is planned to be a white TPO, thermoplastic overlay roof.
Mark, if you want, anything in your report that particularly applies or based on what you've heard, do you want to hold?
Sure. Yeah, I have a few questions. So one of my comments, I bring up the scenic corridor ordinance, which indicates that the building design shall be designed, quote, "in harmony with the corridors, topography, view sheds, architectural styles, colors, character, and appearance." Do you care to offer some testimony in respect to that?
I would say the landscape and the, that part of the design of the project is trying to address that requirement.
Are we going to get actual, actual any proof of that? I mean, in terms of visuals?
Yeah, so...
I know you addressed this before, but, you know, when you bring, when you bring our architect up, and we don't know what the building looks like, that would seem to kind of like be a minimum threshold. No aspersions against your expertise.
Sure, sure, I understand.
But I mean, what I would expect to see is kind of like, was alluded to by Bob already, is not what we've seen.
The thought was, the building itself needed to be described, and then that building needs to be put in context with respect to the site plan, with respect to our landscape architect, in providing answers to Mr. Haley's questions, and also in providing some of the mitigation that we have decided to implement as a result of meetings, so that then the board can make a decision. Certain applications, I put the site engineer up first, and then the building later, but I thought in this case, since there were two buildings, I thought it was more appropriate to describe the buildings. But I think all of the concerns that you have, if you go through this package, which I'm sure you've reviewed as board members, we have grading details, we have lighting details, we have landscaping details, and there's also some off-site mitigations that we are proposing. And so, once the picture evolves, you will get to see all of that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, as you know, the way I've operated in the past, Peter, I don't, none of us are experts, or subject matter experts, but we do need to have a fairly decent, at least, picture of what we're being asked to approve. So the other question I have architecturally is, I know this is not the planning testimony, but in terms of the variances, what architectural impacts either necessitate or are mitigating the variances that you are requesting for the application? Or is that a planning question?
I think that that's a planning question with respect to the buildings themselves. The buildings themselves are fully compliant with the ordinance, the buildings do not require a variance, they meet all of the setback requirements of both the BI zone and the scenic corridor ordinance. So there are no variances with respect to the buildings. Again, there may be some mitigation, which we will get into with respect to the testimony for the scenic corridor, but they are not variances with respect to the building itself.
Okay.
Before we get too far down the.
Microphone.
May not be variances involving the building, but the buildings are involved. So is there any impediment in the site plan to making the buildings maybe 10% smaller, and then not having any setback variances anywhere?
We feel that the buildings are appropriate, and you'll hear the testimony, that buildings are appropriate for the site, they are below the required building, or allowed building coverage, the site is below the impervious coverage. The only variances, and we'll get to them a little bit later, is really that there is no violation with respect to any of the setbacks of the BI zone. The only violation is of the scenic corridor ordinance, where there is a portion of the parking area and a portion of the stormwater management within that setback.
But I consider a violation of the scenic corridor a pretty significant violation, whether your applicant or your client does or not, and, you know, the building is 73,400 and some square feet or whatever, you can't make the building 2,000 square feet smaller, move everything over, eliminate the, it's a scenic corridor variance. That took a special act of a council to establish. You don't have scenic corridors all over the area, and a setback variance is pretty easy, you've got plenty of land, it's pretty easy to do something about it, you know, if the applicant has a little determination.
I understand your comment, Mr. Thomas, we feel that what we are proposing is consistent with the BI zone, number one. Number two, the deviations of the scenic corridor ordinance, we need to provide you proofs that substantiate the variances that we are seeking, and the board can either accept or reject them. I think that the board needs to hear all of the testimony before it makes that decision. I understand your concern, and I'm sure my client who's sitting here understands your concern, but we are entitled to request variances, that's why you guys exist.
That's true, but one other little thing, maybe you can think, keep in mind as we go down the road here, whether the ordinance calls for it or doesn't call for it, you know, my ordinance does. Your property has two sides that are adjacent to two intense residential zones. To me, that puts a very much higher burden on your client to do above and beyond what's just minimum, what's just legal, and why I think a setback variance on a scenic corridor is maybe even more important here.
And again, I respectfully disagree that we have an obligation to do anything above and beyond what the ordinance requires, although we have gone above and beyond in many respects as a result of negotiations.
That may be true, but you have an obligation to show me that there is no impact, or very minimum impact, on the residential zones, and how you handle setbacks, landscaping, and the things that you do above and beyond, go a long way in convincing me that your client's taking that seriously.
I agree with you 100%, Mr. Thomas, and I think, and I hope that by the time we finish our presentation, and you see what the end product is going to look like, we will have satisfied you, but that'll be your decision at the end of the testimony.
One quick question regarding hours of operation. You met with the tenants nearby, and you removed the lighting. Will you be open during the nighttime? If so, from a professional standpoint, do you think that was the right move to remove the lighting?
The operation is a potential 20, we don't have a tenant, but generally, these facilities are 24/7. There is lighting in the parking lot, so we are not saying that that area will not be lit. The resident, or the board at Canal Walk asks us to remove the wall pack lighting on that side, and that's what was removed from the plan. But there will be lighting in the parking lot, which meets the township's standards to provide safety to anybody who is parking in that parking lot.
Aesthetically, how do you feel about that, as an architect?
I think it's fine, from an aesthetic and safety point. On the Mettler side, yeah.
So why did you include lighting to begin with?
Yeah, because I'm an architect, and I like to light my buildings so they're seen, right? In this case, right?
Because they're scenic?
Because you want to. As an architect, I, you know, I'm designing buildings for people to be seen, in this particular case, the goal is for them to be more, go away and blend into the background, so that's an appropriate aesthetic decision.
With the bays facing each other, because it, from the design, it looks like the two buildings, the bays are facing each other, is that correct? The bays, the bays that they're, that the trucks back into?
Yeah, the loading.
They face each other, right. And so, what is the distance between the two buildings?
That, I would need the civil engineer to talk to.
Okay, but when you're architecting it, do you design for the way that these trucks are gonna perhaps be going in and out simultaneously, that might then cause a ripple effect, leaving trucks on the road?
I'm designing the specific building, the site and site movements are designed by the civil engineer and the traffic consultant.
You will hear testimony to that effect. That was also reviewed by your staff, and the width of the loading docks is a variance that we'll be seeking, which has been supported by the engineering report.
Okay. Yeah, and just in terms of sound quality, in terms of the sounds emanating from this building, what's been done architecturally to mitigate those sounds from disturbing the public housing that's right next to us?
So the main item is what you just pointed out, the loading docks are in the middle of the site, so the loading docks are blocked, you know, from emitting sound from trucks and things like that to the neighborhood by the buildings themselves.
Okay, what about like things like the air conditioning units and the other things that, you know, also emanate sound throughout the night? I mean, it's a 24-hour facility that's going to be working, we don't want our neighbors there to be up all night, hearing the buzzing sounds around them.
Sure, sure, by nature of how these buildings generally operate, there aren't any large cooling towers, or large, huge, large mechanical units that are gonna make noise like that. You know, it's smaller stuff that keeps the building, you know, generally, they heat these things to 60 degrees, more for just general comfort, you know, for storage of things that generally, they're not, you know, air conditioning the building, other than the small office area, and 2,000 square foot, the unit would be very small.
Not going.
I don't anticipate it would make much noise at all.
But not knowing who the potential tenant is, does that leave some variability in terms of what that would look like?
I can't speculate on what a tenant might.
The problem we have, though, is we have to approve a building based on speculation.
Well, no, no, let's get this straight, I mean, you're gonna build the building, it's not gonna depend on the tenant, I sure as hell hope it won't, because obviously, you know, if we're being asked to approve a building that looks like X and functions like X, and behaves like X, and we were to approve that, no. Actually, that's a great point you just evoked, was, it might be spec, but it can't be changed unless it comes back before the board.
You're absolutely correct, and the testimony is, right now, the building is proposed based on industry standards to provide some heat in the building, no air conditioning, no air conditioning units on the roof, which would make noise, the only air conditioning is in the office. And again, my client has a tremendous amount of experience in this area, and has designed the building for what they feel is appropriate for this site and for its intended users. If there are changes, we all know we have to come back and amend an application.
Okay.
Your discussion brought up another.
Microphone.
Another thought, I don't like the idea that we're automatically assuming that this is gonna be a 24/7 operation, and this goes back to what I alluded to before. I don't care what the legal issues are, and this is one time, I may vote differently one way or another. You are adjacent to two residential zones. Legally or not, as far as I'm concerned, you have a different obligation. Your client chose that property, those residential zones were there. I'm thinking, at best, this is maybe a 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night operation, not a 24/7. And of course, I also realize, since this is spec, it's hard for you to make any commitment, hard for us to make a commitment, you can't even assess the impact your use is going to have on the neighborhood. Not being able to assess the impact means we're not positive we're gonna be able to mitigate the negative effects effectively. And I'm bringing this up only because you're adjacent to two high-dense residential zones, and this shouldn't be.
And I will have, I will not respond to that, I will let counsel give you advice as to whether the fact that something like that is adjacent to the subject property is a basis to impose a condition, whether it's reasonable or unreasonable, and you'll have to do what you have to do at the end of the hearing.
But I think, I think what you're hearing, Peter, is you are asking for variances for front yard setbacks, for 50-foot buffer requirement, and they're listed in Mark Haley's report, and we're simply saying to you that those variances, you know, if we were determined that they meet the C1 and C2 criteria, it's great, but benefits outweighing the detriments, goes to what Bob is saying. And so I think that what we're asking you to do is examine it very carefully, because if you weren't asking for variances, and, you know, we would probably have less of a legal right, but we were asking for C1 and C2 variances, or, you know, whatever criteria your planner puts before us, and one of those speaks to, you know, setbacks. And so, you know, setbacks come in different flavors, right? If your detention basin violates a setback, and it's a landscape detention basin, I'm probably not gonna care very much. Parking lots do, and I understand the building, per se, the building doesn't, but if the parking lots do, the parking lots are ancillary to the building, because it's so much parking is required based on the size of the building, you now have a picture of what the board is hoping that you'll consider. So I think I would leave it at that, I don't wanna get into the legal ramifications, I did not stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, so, but at least, all I can say is that. I think, I think you, I think you just kinda get a flavor for this.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple more, so the, are you going to be presenting three-dimensional renderings of the building?
I have two in this presentation here, we just, we didn't get to them, I can show them to you now.
All right.
And then, and then there are 3D representations of what the building looks like on Mettler's, with the landscape and the berms and everything, that the landscape architect was gonna present.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking, I mean, obviously, some of the board members have talked about needing more information, but in my report, I had recommended that as well, and the reason for that is, you really, you have two things, whether it's you, in combination with some of the others, you have to address the scenic corridor ordinance, and then we also have the design standard for industrial development, that talks about having a finished appearance of, you know, where it faces roadways, et cetera. So, you know, not only I think does the board need to see it, and have already asked for it, whether it's your testimony or your others, need to concentrate on those two main things, scenic corridor, and again, that design standard that's in our ordinance, okay? And I think part of it, one last thing, too, is I noticed in the, you had showed the go-away green, and I think maybe perhaps it's the way it's rendered on your exhibit, but the way I looked at it, it looked kind of like that green, but I don't think that's go-away green. I'm sure somebody's gonna clarify that, my understanding of go, you know, I Googled it, I mean, it's a very muted, almost kind of like Army Green type, you know, muted color.
Specifically Sherwin-Williams relish color.
Okay, so, there you go, so maybe that's the testimony right there, but it's, I don't think it's supposed to look like that, thank you.
Can we see those drawings, has he got them?
We would, we have been assured that we will get them.
He said he has them available now.
Yeah, you can.
All right, I mean, if you wanna continue your testimony, because we've asked for this 3D, and you wanna do that now, I mean, I got the impression that you thought that maybe we'd be addressing this in other testimonies.
We can have him testify and present some additional information on the buildings now, rather than later, and then I'll blend it into the rest of it.
Okay, I think that could be helpful.
All right, and just for the record, the drawing that, or the exhibit that is up on the board, was that part of the submission that was made in conjunction with this application?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, now, can you describe which building that is, and also describe?
Sure, that is, the image up there is the north facade of Building A, which, that is facing Schoolhouse Road.
Okay.
It's a little hard to see in the image, because it's kind of washed out, but there's, the colors and the reveals are all designed to break down that elevation, there's a fin wall on the left side, which is adjacent to the loading dock, to give it architectural interest along Schoolhouse Road.
And, and when you say it's washed out, is it perhaps by virtue of the fact that it's on a?
Yes.
And would it probably be more helpful to the board members if, at the next meeting, you had paper copies of the colors of the front facades of those buildings?
Sure, absolutely.
Could we see the whole building in context?
Bob, Bob, can you, your microphone must be, I'm not liking it.
Could we see the whole building in context with the site, not just several different views?
As I mentioned, there are other, I have two images here of the fronts of the buildings that face Schoolhouse Road, if you go to the second one, this is Building B, and shows the, you know, the office area, and it's. And it's, the two buildings are meant to complement each other, and this has lots of glass there where the office is. And it's meant to really feel more like an office building. But what, to your question, there are other exhibits that show other parts of the building, but they include the landscape and everything, so that's their intent to be shown later with the landscape architect.
For the next meeting- For the next meeting, at a minimum, the exhibits that are on the board, we will bring paper-colored exhibits so the board can get a better feel of what the buildings will look like.
Yeah, I think that would be super helpful. And, you know, orient us, you know, where Metlers, what Schoolhouse, what are we looking at from that, those vantage points? Would be tremendously helpful, because I get the sense that we've discussed this as long as we have, because the board really has no feeling at what we're looking at. I mean, that's just, that's just fact. I mean, it's hard, based on what you've presented, just to get a feeling for, I drive by when this is built, if this is built, and this is what I'm looking at. I don't know that I could describe that. I'm challenged anybody else to here either, so. Okay, that being said, let's, oh, Ted, do you have another question?
Well, I just wanted to say that these representations are not part of the plans that I have. So if they're not generally part of the plans, then they should be marked in evidence. Perhaps when you bring paper copies would be the better time to do it, but, and another point, which perhaps doesn't make any difference, but in these plans, the longsides are called the north and south elevations instead of the east and west, which is what I think they should be.
Okay, I can look at those plans.
Any other board questions for what we, what at least we have now? If not, then I'm going to make a motion to open, open to the public-
Second.
And we'll do exactly what we did with the first witness. We'll start with Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Lieberman.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Can I make a request? Do we oppose? Is that on the mic?
Okay, go ahead. We'll see if I got this one.
For the record, Chair and Board, this is Stuart Lieberman. I request that cross be held off until we get those documents. I mean, it's very hard. We, there's, I want to see what they have. I want to understand it, and then we could have each person come up and do it. I just think it's too early right now. You know, they said they're coming back with this stuff. I'd like to see it. I don't know how everybody else feels, but that's what I'd rather do, if it's okay.
I'd rather give those members of the public who would like to speak an opportunity to speak.
I understand. Thank you.
So, and just, you know, keep in mind that we have the architect, everybody who's sworn in will be available at all times during the, during the course of however many days this takes, evenings. And so we'll, we would definitely have him back, and he would, and then we would open it up again. So you're not losing any opportunity, but let's see what, if there are any other questions for tonight, based on what we have.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Cohen, do you-
No question.
Do you have none?
Well, I'll, there's some, but I-
Stuart, we'll-
I'm not going to twist your arm.
Stuart, if you want, we'll get you the documents, and then you can cross-examine at the next-
I would rather-
Yeah.
I would rather do that if that's acceptable, if the board's okay with that. Okay, go ahead. Okay. So now, we'll turn to members of the public not represented under the HOA attorney, or Mr. Lieberman. And of course, we have-
Alex Strauss, 285, How's the Way Somerset. Mr. Cobb, is it Mr. Cobb? I'm sorry, Mr.-
Yes, it is.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Mr. Cobb, is there any attempt, Chairman Nocini was talking about air conditioning for products that may be there? Is there any attempt also to air condition as far as for the workers? Obviously, so for at Mavis buying tires, bright blackstone behind, President Counter said she worked at where ours is. I said, "How is it?" She says, "Hot." And she doesn't want to work there again, inside. And they use mostly temporary workers there. So is there any attempt, I know it could affect, sorry, neighbors if there's noise on the roof, but is there any attempt to immitulate the situation as far as the heat inside, air conditioning?
The current design does not include air conditioning.
Okay. So could it, or with solar panels or something, or, I mean, to help lower the energy costs?
The roof is designed to carry a future solar panel installation.
Okay. So it's solar-ready?
It is solar-ready, yes.
I see. Okay.
And just, again, I think it was testified, the offices, the office portion is air-conditioned.
But don't you think that's unfair, sort of? I mean-
It's a difference.
All right. I know. Maybe industry practice, but, you know. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Help me have somebody making their way. There we have it.
Good evening. Robert Hudak, 28 Stratford Drive.
Can you, can you spell?
I'm sorry.
Can you spell your last name, Robert?
28 Stratford Drive. S-T-R-A-T-F-O-R-D.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess this is a question for the board. Should the warehouse owners want to put air conditioning in there, is that a variance that has to go before the board? If they wanted to air-condition the whole facility?
It's not a variance. I mean, it's being discussed as an element of their building design, but there's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't have an air conditioning system.
So they can build this building and then add rooftop chilling?
Well, that's a different, that's a different question. If theoretically, if the board was to impose it as a condition that they did not have AC, theoretically, if the board did that, then they would have to come back to the board if they chose to add the AC. If that's something, avenue that the board went down.
Right. So what I'm getting at is the potential of noise for rooftop chillers for a building of this size.
I mean, look at me, but I mean, the testimony is that there's no air conditioning.
Yeah, in the current design, the only air conditioning is the 2,000-square-foot small office. The remainder of the warehouse is, has no air conditioning.
But if a client wanted to have chillers in the future, do they have to go before the board? Now I'm asking the board here.
Again, we'd have to, we'd have to see what the board ultimately decides. As of right now, that's their testimony. What the board does with that testimony, I can't tell you. Theoretically, again, they could impose it as a condition, and if they did, then they would have to come back to the board.
I mean, legally, just to answer your question legally, Robert, I would say that unless the air conditioning equipment that they wanted to add created a variance, for example, for building height because of the chillers, or because of something else that, design-wise, would create an ordinance, then they would absolutely have to come back. Legally, I think that's the way I would see it.
Okay, great. I don't know if this is something for you, but as far as hazardous materials in here, could you tell me what classifications are allowed in this?
The building is designed as an S1 storage building, which does not allow H-uses. In the building code, an H-use, this building is not designed to be an H-use facility.
Okay, so there's no special flammable room or anything like that-
No.
-that's going to be incorporated?
Not in, not currently, no.
Okay. And that would have to be a variance, I guess, in the future if a client would want to put hazardous materials of that type into this facility? This is a question to the board again.
I think it would go back to Mark's original answer on your air conditioning. If we, if we condition approval that hazardous materials are not to be stored, should this ultimately be approved? Of course, I'm not going to say that every time. Obviously, it's an assumption. But if we were to approve, and we would, you know, at least I, if I, would make that a condition that they would have to come back, because I think that's a, that's a major change, right? But yeah, I mean, the board can make any reasonable condition, and the applicant already testified that they, that they, they are not intending to store those things, so we could certainly make that a condition of approval. I would have no problem with that. And then they would have to come back if they wanted to change it.
Perhaps the question is, if a building is designed for non-hazardous use, is it readily feasible to convert it at a later date for the storage of hazardous materials, or is that something that's basically impossible to do?
I would never say anything's impossible, but, you know, currently, the way it's designed and the criteria for, if you're asking me if it can be an H-use, which is a specific use in the building code, it's not designed for that now, and it would need modifications, definitely.
Well, I think Mr. Hudak is, in effect, is asking, could it be converted to that use? And I'm asking you, is that readily feasible or not readily feasible?
That, I would have to investigate that. I can't, I don't know that answer off the top of my head.
But regardless, if we made it a condition of approval that they can't have hazardous materials there, feasible or unfeasible, then they have to come back.
Right. My concern is that there's a number of classes of hazardous materials, and that if you go to something that's very dangerous, I'd be very concerned about something traveling on a road to that facility.
For sure.
Okay. One last question, please. The number of personnel that maximum that could be working in both of these facilities, do you know what that would be and how many parking spaces are there?
We have the information on the number of parking spaces, and that will be presented by the next witness. I can have this, again, we don't have a user for either of these buildings, but we could probably give you a general number that would typically occupy this type of a building. We can get that for you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I'm Robin Suydam, 54 Skillman's Lane.
For this denographer, Robin, I know how to spell your name, but can you spell it, please?
S-U-Y-D-A-M.
And Skillman, S-K-I-L-L-M-A-N.
So I plead my ignorance here. I'm trying to understand how a building with this appearance fits the basic statement in our scenic corridor overlay that Mr. Healy read earlier. I'm just stunned, and I would ask maybe the architect and the board, tell me how you can see this building being designed in harmony with the corridors, topography, view sheds, architectural styles, colors, character, and appearance. I can see where it is in harmony with other warehouses and other huge building complexes, but we have a scenic corridor overlay ordinance, and I'm struggling to figure out how this works. And maybe you can help me.
So, well, let's, this is, this is question time. So I think, and that issue has come up a few minutes ago, and I think the answer is that we're going to have more exhibits and more testimony, not just from this expert, but others as well.
And I did, I did hear that, but I came up specifically during the architect, because it does say the structure, and it is a massive structure. So I'm happy to-
So pose it in the form of a question.
Okay. How does this structure comply with that wording that is in our scenic corridor overlay ordinance, where this structure is in harmony with our scenic corridors, topography, view sheds, architectural styles, colors, character, and appearance? I have a home in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, a condo. View sheds are a very big deal out West, because when people look at the mountains, they don't want to see a roof line. So I've come to appreciate the word "view sheds." We don't hear it much here in New Jersey, but we notice it when it's wrong. And I'm, I'm concerned, so my question is, how does this comply with the view shed in that corridor? And I'm happy to hear the answer sitting down. Thank you.
Sure. So I appreciate the question. I appreciate the wording. So I think if you think about everything you just said holistically, it's all of those things put together, and I believe when you see how the landscape integrates with the building later, when the landscape architect shows his design, that, I believe that it does what you're asking it to do.
Like, like some other things, it looks like we're going to have to wait some other testimony to get a full picture. But a full picture we must get. I am going to assume that Arnie's not standing there for his health, so.
Oh, my turn.
Yeah.
I was trying to understand, I'm sorry, Arnie Schmidt, 134 Hickory Road. I'm just trying to understand the picture that we have up on here. Somebody mentioned before about how, the way the two warehouse, the way the two warehouses are facing each other, and so the noise is going to be contained when the trucks are going back and forth in between there. And my concern is that you have a wind tunnel between the two buildings there, and the noise is going to get funneled from, between the buildings, from one end to the other. And I was trying to understand, these two buildings facing each other, at the end of those two buildings, what's at the end of those two buildings? Are they facing Schoolhouse? Are they facing Summer Fields? Are they facing any of the residential developments? And if they are, then the noise is going to get funneled towards any of those residential properties. But it was difficult for me to see from the diagram, from the picture that they had, where it is.
In all fairness, I think you will be able to see better. The gentleman standing behind you is our site engineer. He will testify the next meeting. He has numerous exhibits to show what the, the inner relationship between the two buildings, the separation between the two buildings of the truck court. And then the bottom-line answer to your question is that, with respect to noise, noise is governed by the state of New Jersey, who has standards for these types of facilities, which indicate how much noise can be emitted at the property line, both during daylight hours and evening hours. And we are required to comply with those standards. Based on our initial analysis, we will be in full compliance. If we are not, then we may be required to do something to mitigate that noise, but in our opinion, based on the size of the lot and where we located everything, we will be in compliance with the state standards. This board really doesn't have jurisdiction over those issues. Those are state issues.
I'm very familiar with the noise regulations. Buildings are not regulated by the state. Equipment is regulated by the state. The regulations state that sound levels are taken at the property line of facilities where people might be living or complaining.
That is correct.
And my concern is that the noise that is funneled between those buildings, or any noise from those buildings, as Mr. Hudak was talking about, rooftop pieces of equipment, how is that going to affect the adjacent buildings? My first thought, though, was, there's a lot of noise from those trucks moving back and forth, and it's going to be funneled, you know, what's at the end of those two buildings to stop the noise from going outside of that property there? And I'm wondering if you have an acoustical engineer who is going to be taking sound level readings on those properties to make sure that they are within those guidelines, those nighttime and daytime regulations? I'm sure you do, but I just wanted to bring that up.
You can't determine whether the operation is violative of any state statute or- or regulation until the facility is up and operating, and obviously, when it is up and operating, if, and, and again, based on our initial analysis, we do not feel that this is an issue at all, but if it should become an issue, then we have an affirmative obligation to mitigate that, to meet the applicable, applicable standards, which may be sound walls or other things of that nature, if they are necessary, which, again, we do not believe they are here.
So, you've never had a property like this, where you've had two buildings next to each other, where a similar circumstance is that you'd be able to model after something like that?
There, there are numerous buildings that have been approved, even in this municipality, where there are two facilities side by side with a, a truck court in between, so this is not an unusual situation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware of that being a possibility and something that needs to be considered. Thank you.
My name is Robert Sariego, 138 Canal Walk Boulevard, in Canal Walk.
Can you spell your last name, please?
S-A-R-I-E-G-O. I'd like to know, sort of tandem from the last question, of the fourteen, 15.4 million square foot of warehouse space in New Jersey, 142 facilities, are any of those facilities adjacent to two residential communities, and if so, what townships approve those in your, in your purview?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, nor do I believe it's relevant to this application, but I've, I know there are warehouses that are adjacent to residential zones, but I can't give you specific information.
I have been in the warehouse business, I own one myself in Pennsylvania, and I also know that what's approved initially is circumvent to fit-outs for future leases, so can the, the planning board explain what the process for fit-outs are, and, and what is the criteria that may change the dynamics of the warehouse in our community if it, if it is in fact built?
I, I don't know. It's a question we can answer. I mean, you, the first part of your question is way too general, and, and, you know, beyond the scope of what the board and the applicant is really responsible for, for, for answering. I mean, like it or not, we have 566, somebody can correct me, municipalities in New Jersey, we love Home Rule, and because of that, nobody talks to anybody else, and that's why we got problems. That being said, whether North Brunswick has it this way, or is East Brunswick, or anybody else, it, it, it's not, it's not something we can consider. You know, this was, it's in the BI zone, and, and it's an application that comes before the planning board, and I don't think I, I can compel the applicant to answer more than that. And then, obviously, we haven't gotten through all the testimony, but we'll, we'll have to see, you know, what they, Ms. Scrable and, and Mr. Cobb have, have talked about so far, is all we can judge that this, this warehouse will be, and there's a lot more to come. And I think you've heard the board tonight ask many questions that the applicant will should very reasonably go back and address. So, I, I think that's technically all I can, I can tell you that we have the purview to examine.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else coming forward, I move to close the public portion for the...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So, we are at five minutes to 10, so we will resume our next meeting, which is, well, we'll have to talk about the schedule, but what I want, nobody go anywhere yet.
Hold up, folks. You're gonna know, you're gonna wanna know when it's carried.
Yeah, you're gonna wanna know, and you're gonna wanna know how to find out when you forget. So, what is, do you, obviously, you don't have to notice again, right? Or, or do you? I mean, I'm, I'm asking.
In discussions with township staff, I understand that the next meeting will be two weeks from today on the 18th at 7:30 in this location. You can confirm that with Mr. Healy, but that's my understanding. So, the board would have to carry it to that date without further notice.
Mike? Okay. So, everybody here's at 7:30, uh, January 18?
18. This location.
In this location.
And no further...
Not at the municipality.
And no further...
No further notice, but you certainly can look at the agenda and everything on the Township Planning Board website.